This meeting of the Huntsville City Council is called to order. We are met in council chambers on February 23rd. Welcome, everyone. We have a long agenda tonight. We will begin with an invocation given by Reverend Dr. Robert Somerville of Awareness Ministries, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, given by Councilman Mark Russell. Please stand and join us for the invocation by Robert Somerville.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, I thank you this evening for this city council, the elders and concerned citizens. Your word clearly commands us to pray for those in authority. So prayer is not just a formality, but indeed a necessity. Your prophet Isaiah articulated the appropriate formula for successful counseling by declaring upon the overseers of his time these seven attributes of your character. As I now declare on this council, may the Spirit of the Lord, or love, rest upon you; for sensitivity, the spirit of wisdom, to communicate; the spirit of understanding, to discern the truth; the spirit of counsel, to listen; the spirit of strength, to be patient; the spirit of knowledge, to grasp the facts; the spirit of the fear of the Lord, for truth and for everlasting justice. May it be so on this council this evening, in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Somerville.
Please face the flag and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Russell. Council members, you have been provided copies of the minutes of the regular meeting held February 9th. Are there any changes or additions to the minutes as they have been presented to you? During no changes or additions, the minutes will stand as they have been presented. We have no resolutions or special recognitions tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. And we have minutes also of the special session held February 16th, 2017. Are there any changes or additions to the minutes of the special session held on February 16th, 2017? No changes or additions, the minutes will stand as presented. We have no resolutions or special recognitions tonight by the mayor or by council, but we do have, for adoption only, a resolution congratulating Reverend Dr. Oscar L. Montgomery on the celebration of his 40th pastoral anniversary to be held February 26th, 2017, at Union Hill Primitive Baptist Church. This is from Councilman Culver.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Culver, second by Mr. Russell. Would you like to make any comments, Councilman Culver?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. I'm looking forward to celebrating with Pastor Dr. Oscar Montgomery on Sunday of this week, his 40th pastoral anniversary. Forty years, that's a long time to do anything. So, we will be celebrating, and thank you, Madam President.
It's remarkable to be 40 years at one church.
It is.
He has been of great service to this community. All in favor of approving the resolution, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to Pastor Montgomery. Announcements. First of all, item 15K has been deleted, please note that on your agenda. Secondly, the administration has required an item to be added to the agenda. It would become item 16A2. It is a vacation of easement for the Mid-City Development. Specifically, this ordinance vacates gas, sewer, and water lines easements for Mid-City Subdivision Phase 1 by Mid-City Owners LLC. The Chair moves to add the item to the agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion, Mr. Davis, would you like to comment on this addition?
Yes, council members, I apologize for this late add. Both Huntsville Utilities and Engineering Department thought that this item was on the last council meeting. As you're very aware, vacation of easements are routine items at the very end of the council meeting for each council session. And the reason for the add is there's a closing to occur on Monday that would require a portion of these easements to be vacated on that tract.
So, given the urgency of that timeline, it is for consideration tonight. Again, vacations of easements don't normally require introduction, so we will treat it simply as an item once it is added to the agenda, and it will become 15A2. All in favor of adding the item to the agenda, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to add to the agenda.
Thank you, council members.
Passes. And it will become 15A2, or 16, 16A2, thank you. We have no business with outside legal representation. We do have a number of public hearings to be held. 6A1. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 17-003 rezoning 101.3 acres of property lying on the east side of Gray Road and north of Huntsville Brown's Ferry Road from Residence 1B District to Highway Business C4 District. This is 23.82 acres. And planned industrial District, 77.4 acres. This was set at the January 12th, 2017, regular council meeting. A report from planning.
Ms. Nichols, Planning Division. This rezoning request is approximately 101.3 acres. The current property is zoned Residence 1B. The current property owner is the owner of this entire tract. He owns the Residence 1B portion as well as the planned industrial portion. He would like to split zone the property so that he may provide an additional planned industrial buffer to an industrial use that takes place on the rear of this property, as well as he would like to request a commercial portion of the property.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address this matter with the council? If so, please come to the microphone and identify yourself. Is there anyone wishing to address this item 6A1? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Is there any discussion on this item? Questions for Ms. Nichols? All in favor, indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing 6A2. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 17-005 rezoning 2.10 acres of property lying on the north side of Davis Circle and east of Dr. Joseph Lowery Boulevard from Medical District to General Business C3 District. This was set at the January 12th, 2017, regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols.
This rezoning request is approximately 2.1 acres. It is currently an existing church. The church will be relocating, and they have a proposed user for this property. The property is currently zoned Medical District, and the proposed use cannot go onto the property under the existing zoning designation. So, the property owner would like to request that this property be rezoned to General Business C3, which is consistent with the remaining downtown zoning designation that you see in the green.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on item 6A2? Please step to the microphone and identify yourself, giving your name and address. Ms. Reed.
Well, I'm Jackie Reed, Jack Coleman Drive. I just wondered, is the medical district in the hospital ever ask about all the medical district property that we're turning into businesses? Does anybody ever find out if the medical, the hospital needs any of this property?
Ms. Nichols, do you all have communications with the hospital about this?
We do, and all property owners that are within a 500-foot radius were notified of the public hearing. Huntsville Hospital has never owned any of this property. Most of this property has either been some type of place of worship, or it is currently an existing office or medical space.
So, it's never been really used for medical purposes?
No.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on this matter? Mr. Timberlake.
Ralph Timmerlake, 2117 Akron Drive, Huntsville, Alabama 35810. I rise, Madam President. To find out if I understood the presentation correctly, that this was, this is church property. I'm trying to find out, is it the current owner of the property asking for this zoning, or is it someone else? Because I'm a very proponent of religious freedom and having those kind of edifices that allow for people to wish, have a place or worship. Churches have a unique place in our history, and to simply exchange a sacred place as a church for some profit is antithetical to me. I just cannot understand that, and I hope you will vote against that if that's the reason, because I think another set of parishioners should have the right to come into that edifice, in that particular area, and utilize that area for what had been previously designated, because we should not be exchanging religious thing for profit, and that's what this seem to be for. I ask my councilman particularly to lend his one vote against this particular instance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake. Ms. Nichols, has any church expressed interest in purchasing this property?
Not that I'm aware of. The current church is the petitioner of this application, and they do have a pending contract with a future user for this particular site, and it is not another place of worship. Again, the church has relocated, and they have a contract with the desired user.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment? The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve item 6A2?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Culver, and then?
Madam President.
Mr. Keith.
Thank you, Madam President. So, this particular property, and I've spoken personally with the owners of that property. In fact, the purpose of the property as a church where it is has kind of been usurped to some degree, and this church is moving, in fact, there's a groundbreaking ceremony this Sunday regarding this particular property. So, we're not pushing out churches, it's just that this particular new owner is a better fit for that particular property. So Huntsville, Madison County is not losing a church, we're just moving it to a different location at their discretion.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Culver, Ms. Keith.
And he took everything I was going to say. I also wanted to ask, are a lot of these contracts contingent upon rezoning?
Yes, there is a clause within the contract that is contingent upon the rezoning of the property, once the item is actually effective.
So, they would need us to rezonate for them to then sell the property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, or?
Yes, Ms. Nichols, tell me what can go in C3 District.
C3, you can have a variety of uses, similar to what you see in downtown today. You can have banks, you can have mixed-use developments, you can have restaurants, bars, office space, a much larger variety versus Medical District, which is pretty limited to medical uses only. You can also have places of worship in the C3 District as well.
Yeah, I assume you can have places of worship in any district in Huntsville?
Pretty much, in most of our districts, we accommodate them.
And what about, can C3, can you have doctors' offices in C3?
You can have medical offices.
Thank you.
So, this expands the use in that area to, in addition to the current use, it makes it possible for other uses as well.
Yes.
It doesn't limit the use. Any other questions or comments from the council? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6A3, now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 17-007, zoning 1.26 acres of newly annexed property lying on the east side of Old Big Cove Road and on the north side of Kennedy Lane to Residence 1B District. This was set at the January 12th, 2017, regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols.
This is newly annexed property. This property was annexed back in November. The proposed rezoning request for this property is Residence 1B, which is consistent with several other single-family detached homes south of this property. And this property is located on the east side of Old Big Cove and on the north side of Kennedy Lane. This is in the Owens Crossroads area, near the River Ridge subdivision.
Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Mr. Timberlake.
Your humble servant, Ralph Timmerlake, 2117 Akron Drive, Huntsville, Alabama. In light of what I heard in the previous vote, I had to ask the question related to this. When these rezonings are done, are they done for those that are vacating the property, or are these done for those that are utilizing the property? That seem to be a misunderstanding I'm having. I think that whenever someone is vacating property, they should lose their right to say what that property is to which they're leaving, and it should come before the city, the tenants that are particularly having a desire to utilize that property. So, I do not understand who has a right or has standings in order to ask for these zoning, because I'm hearing both sides, and I don't think that is right. I don't think that's what the zoning, the reason for zoning was designed for, it was designed, I think, to ensure what was coming in, not for what was going out. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Ms. Nichols, is the current resident requesting this?
Yes, after every annexation request, planning staff will then proceed with zoning property. All properties in unincorporated Madison County do not have a zoning designation, as the county does not observe zoning as Huntsville and Madison do. So, this property will need a zoning designation, since they are now in the city limits of Huntsville. And for Mr. Timberlake's question regarding the previous zoning or rezoning request, the petitioner is the current property owner, and they have not sold the property just as of yet due to the clause in their property. So, yes, the petitioner or the new property owner cannot petition for rezoning at any time if that is something that planning staff will support.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on item 6A3? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve this annexation?
I move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion from the council? Mr. Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. And just to clarify, the majority of the time, there is some sense of arbitration between the new owner and the old owner, and they come to a consensus of what would make sense on this property before they go to get a rezoning.
Yes, and typically, a lot of petitioners will meet with planning staff first.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor of approving the annexation, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 6B1 is a public hearing to be set. 6B1 is a resolution to set a public hearing on March 9th, 2017, for Lyft Incorporated, doing business as Lyft, to operate a transportation network company in Huntsville, Alabama.
Move to set the hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Culver, by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. Is there any discussion? The public, all in favor of setting the public hearing, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is set. We are now at item 7A, communications from the public. We have a number of people who wish to speak tonight on a variety of items, and we look forward to being able to hear all of you. Given that we have 21 people signed up, we will hold to the three-minute time limit. Please, you'll see the indication up there on the lights, and then Mr. Benyon will also help us with that timing. We will let you know when your three minutes is up. When you come to the microphone, please give us your name and your address for the record. We will begin with Mr. Ralph Timberlake. He is here, his subject is information. Mr. Timberlake, welcome.
Thank you, Madam President. Ralph Timmerlake, 2117 Akron Drive, Huntsville, Alabama 35810. Madam Chair, I come because I'm concerned about transparency in our government and the incumbency of trying to receive documents. As most of us may or may not know about the Sunshine Laws, Open Meetings Laws, and Open Records Laws, which gives petitioners certain rights. There are certain entities, governmental stewards within our city, who says they follow the Alabama Open Records Law, but they seem not to know what the Alabama Open Record Law mandates. The dictates of the Open Records Law, the last time I read it said that any petitioner can petition for those documents during normal business hours. And they can petition those documents orally, or they can present a document. I have found some people in this city, government officials, to be antithetical to both of those. And they have used that most pejorative term of trespassing, "your humble servant," because they were seeking to exercise the privilege to which they had offered their lives in the service of this great country for. I think that is something that I ask you all to take in consideration numerous of time, and that is to deal with that trespassing law, so that someone will never be deprived of their rights to petition that government. That is in our U.S. Constitution. We have a right to petition our government, and the prenumeral of that says we have a right to receive a response from our government. These things are not being done, and when they're not being done, we have anarchy. You know, none of us are above the law. We are a nation of laws, at least that's what our founding fathers want us to do. Let's make it so once again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Timberlake. The next person signed up, Anna Marie Cadilla. Welcome, Ms. Cadilla.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Anna Marie Cadilla, 7105 Jones Valley Drive, 35802. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Anna Marie Cadilla. Soy maestra retirada de Huntsville City Schools y he vivido en Huntsville por 40 años. Good evening. My name is Anna Marie Cadilla. I'm a retired teacher for Huntsville City Schools and a 40-year resident of Huntsville, Alabama. I was born and American citizen on the beautiful island of Puerto Rico, raised by my Mexican mother and Puerto Rican father, immersed in rich Hispanic culture. I'm here to urge our council members to please work with Mayor Battle in instructing the Huntsville Police Department to not act as immigration and custom enforcement agents in our city. We want ICE-free in Huntsville. Un Huntsville libre de inmigración y aduana. As citizens, we should know that there are dire and unfortunate consequences in our society when the wrong decisions are made and enforced. Teachers across Huntsville witnessed one of the saddest days in our city schools on September of 2011, when the most severe and cruelest of immigration laws in the country was put into effect in Alabama. Within 24 hours, several of our beloved Hispanic students, American citizens themselves, many with brilliant academic records and great promise to our country, had literally disappeared along with their families. This is not who we are, Huntsville. In the last few months, I've had the sad but privileged honor of visiting with the men at the Edoa Detention Center in Edoa, Alabama, some of whom have been separated from their families for months or even years. They live in a hellish limbo between here and nowhere. I have heard their pleas to return to work and to their loved ones. All they want is safety for their family, a country where they can work, and to contribute to our American society. Calling them illegal, locking them up, is contrary to our own best interests and to who we are as Americans. As a teacher and longtime resident of Huntsville, I want sensible and compassionate ways to deal with this issue. We are wasting our tax dollars on detention centers when instead we need immigrants' contributions in work and talent, which in turn promote economic growth in our city. So, today I urge our city council to work with Mayor Battle in asking the Huntsville Police Department not to act as immigration and custom enforcement agents. I urge our city council to work in helping us become the city we can be proud of, a sanctuary city. Helping Huntsville become a model of solidarity and compassion. Help Huntsville become an ICE-free city. Se los urgo, por favor. I urge you, please. Un Huntsville libre de inmigración y aduana. An ICE-free Huntsville. This is who we Huntsvillians should and need to be. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cadilla. The next person to sign up is Ellen Jimmerson, subject to sanctuary cities. Ms. Jimmerson, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Reverend Dr. Ellen Jimmerson. I live at 2812 Vista Drive. I am here to ask that you work with the mayor to instruct the police officers not to act as immigration and custom enforcement agents. I want to thank Councilman Devin Keith for his support. Some of you may recall that eight years ago, my daughter Leanna, who was 16, and her boyfriend Tad Maddle, who was 19, were killed by a drunk driver at the intersection of Airport and Whitesburg. The driver was undocumented. A police officer had been pursuing him over traffic violations. I have wondered many times whether, had the driver not been living in constant fear of deportation, he might have pulled over rather than changing his route, which put him on the collision path with Tad and Leanna. The risk for him should have been a ticket, a fine, and possibly limited jail time. But reality is that undocumented people in Huntsville are terrified of police officers because officers are associated with the destruction of all those things they hold dear, especially permanent separation from their families. It seems to me that when you create profound fear among a group of people and associate that fear with another group of people, you are creating a volatile situation. Nothing good comes of it, everybody loses. I have thought many times, too, that both Leanna and Tad descended from people who were persecuted. On her grandparents' sides, Leanna was descended from both German Jews and ethnic Irish. You know about German Jews, but do you remember those signs which once read, "No Irish, no blacks, no dogs"? Tad was a Mormon, whose family came from Utah. To this day, many in Huntsville misunderstand and fear them without reason. I recall my own misperceptions. I had thought Mormons believed only they go to heaven, but at Tad's funeral, I was deeply touched when the minister referred to Tad and Leanna passing together into that realm where families stay together forever and no fear of separation exists. I am here telling you these things because I believe you are fair and decent people who want to treat everybody right. Please, we need an ICE-free Huntsville PD. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Jimmerson. The next person to sign up is Grant Karadine, subject sanctuary cities. Mr. Karadine.
Good afternoon, council, Madam President, Mayor Battle. I'd like to start. Mayor Battle, I appreciate your call today and look forward to our meeting in the next couple of weeks. Again, good evening, Mayor Battle and city council members. My name is Grant Karadine. I'm a resident of Madison at 108 McDermott's Way. However, most of my time is spent in the Rocket City, where I work and worship, and I'm a patron of many businesses. Huntsville is a community of immigrants. People move here from all over the country to take advantage of a thriving economy bolstered by technology, engineering, and military careers. Often, when I introduce myself to someone, the initial response is, "Are you from here"? My answer, "Yes," is always followed by, "That's rare." Imagine Huntsville without the influence of immigrants. Huntsville has a reputation of being progressive in an otherwise regressive state, largely due to the various backgrounds of its constituents. Diversity, inclusion, and compassion is what makes this city unique. It's a driving factor in attracting top talent to the area. Frankly, it breaks the Alabama stigma. Today, I am here asking that this body consider building on the greatness and forward-thinking way of this community by protecting some of its most vulnerable, its undocumented immigrants, undocumented immigrants. Specifically, that the city of Huntsville identify itself as a sanctuary or welcoming city. Defining itself as such means that we will not allow our municipal resources to be used by ICE to raid or otherwise capture individuals based solely on their undocumented status. This is not only practical with respect to how we manage our financial and human capital, it is morally practical and necessary. People like Guadalupe Garcia of Arizona, who this month drew national attention for being deported after coming to the States at the age of 14, is not acceptable. It's not consistent with our nation, with what our nation represents, nor with what our city represents. And she is just one story. In closing, Huntsville has an opportunity to lead the state and the country in shifting this age-old and costly debate by affirming and this age-old and costly debate by affirming and opening its arms to our immigrant communities. I hope you see the benefit and moral responsibility and take quick action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carradine. Our next speaker is James Robinson. Subject is sanctuary cities. Welcome, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you. Honorable City Council Members and Mayor Battle, my name is James Robinson. I live at 802 Burn Avenue. Zip code is 35801. That's in the beautiful Five Points area. Tonight, I add my voice to others supporting the goal of Huntsville becoming a sanctuary city. I'm the founder and CEO of Free to Be, which is a statewide anti-violence project based here in Huntsville, with additional service locations in Athens, Birmingham, Dothan, Mobile, and Montgomery. I would like to thank Councilman Keith for taking time to visit our offices yesterday to meet our staff and to learn about the important services we offer, and I invite each of you to also visit us at your convenience. Our mission is to end violence while advocating for the human and civil rights of sexual and gender minorities. In my capacity as a leader of this organization, I've had the pleasure of serving on the leadership team of the Huntsville Area Inclusive Communities Initiative. In 2009, the Huntsville City Council passed an Inclusive Communities Resolution, which sanctioned this community initiative and placed it under the supervision of the city's Human Relations Commission. I also served as part of a team of community leaders to help establish Huntsville as a city of compassion, and on September 26, 2013, the Huntsville City Council endorsed the International Compassionate Cities Campaign and the Charter for Compassion, two things we should be very proud of. I will read from the charter. "It is also necessary in both public and private life to refrain consistently and emphatically from inflicting pain, to act or speak violently out of spite, chauvinism, or self-interest, to impoverish, exploit, or deny basic rights to anybody, and to incite hatred by denigrating others, even our enemies. It is a denial of our common humanity." As I sat in the meetings to initiate the process of Huntsville being recognized internationally as a city of compassion, I was concerned that this would just be a stamp or a label for our city. I truly wondered if I would see any changes or any actions as we move forward to actually live as a compassionate city. I ask you tonight to help us walk the walk, not just talk the talk, and actively live up to this recognition. I ask that our local law enforcement not be used as immigration and customs enforcement agents, but instead that they continue to do what they do so well and focus on the most important job of providing support and safety to all the people living in and visiting Huntsville. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. The next person to sign up is Swapna Kukani to speak about Rare Disease Day. Ms. Kukani.
Hi. My name is Swapna Kukani, and I'm a twenty-seven-year resident of Huntsville, Alabama. I'm part of District Two, Mark Russell's district. I'm a rare disease patient advocate. I was born with a rare disease twenty-seven years ago called short bowel syndrome, which required me to be dependent on IV nutrition and a feeding tube, and I've had over sixty-two surgeries, including a small intestine transplant, two and a half years ago. A rare disease is a disease that affects less than 200,000 people, but one in ten Americans have a rare disease. There are ten of you sitting up here today. That means one of you may be diagnosed with a rare disease before the end of your lifetime. There's thirty million affected with a rare disease. Four hundred thousand live in our state of Alabama. Two of them are here with me today, Miles McMillan, if you can stand up, and Farrah Fitzgerald with her daughter Leila Fitzgerald, who was born with the exact same diagnosis as I was four years ago. She's four years old. I'm here to talk about Rare Disease Day, a state event next week, March 1st, being held at the State House Lobby in Montgomery from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. in the sixth-floor lobby. We're doing this to increase awareness for rare diseases, to educate legislators, to educate councilmen and councilwomen about rare diseases in the state, and we're going to display a collection of profiles that describe what residents of Huntsville, residents of Alabama, struggle with living with a rare disease. Parents have to travel sometimes out of Madison County and out of state to get care. To survive, I had to get all my care out of state. We have gems in our backyard. It is up to us and the rare disease community to unite and to empower these gems to bring the economy back to the state for the rare disease community. I hope that you can arrange your Montgomery schedule to also attend the event and to support us as we move forward. I've also partnered with Kristin Anthony from the P-10 Foundation, CEO and Director. She's also a Huntsville resident, and Cindy Jones of the Cytosterolemia Foundation. I look forward to your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kukani. Next to speak, Jackie Reed. Our subject is government issues. Ms. Reed, welcome.
Did you say government issues?
It says government issues.
That's usually what I come down here for. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Glad to see you.
Jackie Reed, I just want to thank all these people for coming tonight. This is my kind of government. I just wish you'd come to every meeting and find out what's going on in this city. It's very, very important. I have a lot of issues, and a lot of them are not good. The library, the elevator at the library, right over here, is broken. It's been broken a year. Come up with some money, get that elevator fixed for the next two weeks before the next council meeting. Don't let me have to bring it down here and be told those things. I appreciate that. The roads in the city are terrible, very, very awful, and very, very terrible. It's terrible. I hope I don't say bad words when I drive up and down this street. Yet we spend most of our money hiring private experts to do master plans for downtown. We're spending a lot, wasting a lot of money when we've got professionals in this city that can help you all do master plans to see what the people need in this city. I wish you'd take a better look and turn around and stop this private expert business. They're from out of town, they don't care what we want, they don't know what we need. Parking downtown is terrible. You gave half of it up to the retail downtown. My, I can't say this, I told her I wouldn't bring her name up, but I've been told by several people, come from Pratt Avenue over to Jefferson Street and see what the condominium sidewalks setting in the middle of the street over there. If somebody comes from Pratt, coming down, and trying to cross in a hurry, two cars can't come up through Jefferson Street. You have took the, you call it streetscape, and I want to know the price of it, the real price of it. Don't tell me it's in the budget, I want to know the price of it. What those sidewalks cost that you put around those condominiums down there, and they're sitting in the middle of the street. I think that's awful, very, very awful. And you've turned two-way streets, one-way streets, into two-way streets. Mercy. What else can I say? I mean, I don't know why we're not thinking about a lot of this stuff, and I want to talk about, I hope all of you find peace tonight, because I'm going to tell you what happened to me. I come up here and fussing about something real hard and bad, and I hope they have mercy on you all, because they don't have any on me. I can't get into City Hall without an appointment and escorted in or out. I've lived here since 1958, ran for mayor eight times. I'm a criminal in this city, so I hope they got more compassion for you than they do for me. It's not going away, trust me. I haven't heard from any of those council people setting up there on my issue, but believe me, they're going to hear from us if I have to go to the national news with it. Thank you very much, and I love every one of you.
And Ms. Reed, you have heard from us. We ask you to make appointments, just like we ask every single other person to make appointments, just as we make appointments with department heads. There's important work to be done by this city, and we need to honor that work that's being done and simply show the courtesy of making an appointment. That's all we're asking of you. The next person to sign up is Caroline Earhart. Subject is sanctuary.
My name is Caroline Earhart. I live at 11404 Maple Crest Drive, Huntsville, 35803.
Welcome.
I respectfully ask that the city of Huntsville direct employees to not ask people about their immigration status. I am concerned that if HPD officers are deputized by ICE, more raids and arrests will occur, and distrust of those who wish to protect our community will increase. I fear that our immigrant neighbors will not report crimes, such as child abuse, domestic violence, and other violent crimes, for fear that they will become entangled in the legal system. I believe that due to fear, they will have little or no recourse in cases of stolen wages by employers, or in cases of fraud by immigration attorneys, or other unscrupulous business owners. I worry that our undocumented neighbors will not show up for court dates, will keep their kids home from school, or won't take them for medical care. I fear that because they feel unable to trust our local law enforcement, many people will have no alternative but to live in situations where they are exploited, abused, and victimized. These things will make our city less safe for many of the most vulnerable among us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Earhart. The next person to sign up is Rusty Loisel. Subject, no sanctuary.
I can't believe, oh, my name's Rusty Loisel, Hearthstone Circle, South Huntsville. I can't believe that I've heard so many people tonight asking the city to inform their police officers to break the law, to tell them to not uphold their oath to the Constitution of the United States and to uphold the law. They want them to break the law. This morning, I turned on the news and heard that a group of people were pushing to make Huntsville a sanctuary city, and I thought, I was hearing things, so I waited for the news report to come up again, and sure enough, it was true. The only people who would be interested in turning Huntsville into a dumping ground for illegal aliens are those who benefit from their presence. I'm pretty sure that Huntsville has about, I don't know, 11,000 people that are unemployed. Do you honestly think that by dumping thousands of illegal aliens will help that situation? It will become a serious financial drain on our economy, our medical system, our legal system, our welfare system. It would put a serious strain on our police force. By opening up our city to illegal aliens, it's a slap in the face to those who have spent thousands of hours and dollars becoming American citizens. By even suggesting that we aid and abide criminals, you are calling all of the good legal citizens who went through the legal process suckers. Here's a suggestion. How about everyone who wants illegal aliens to invade Huntsville, go register as an illegal alien sympathizer? That list will be kept on file. When illegal aliens are dumped here, each of these sympathizers would be required to take in at least one family into their home for at least a year. They would be legally and financially responsible for any and all expenses incurred due to legal issues, health issues, et cetera. We all want to live a good life and wish everyone in the world could do the same, but we cannot be a dumping ground for everyone in the world who is displeased with their own country. How could we possibly think that we could be the answer to a better life for anyone when we still have homeless veterans living in the woods, right here in Huntsville, in cardboard boxes? We need to fix our own before we try to fix others. Thank you.
No claps?
Thank you, Mr. Loisel. Next person to sign up is Mary Meg Tilden. Subject is the library elevator.
My name is Meg Tilden. I'm at 2640 Blue Springs Road. The library elevator has been broken for at least four to five months. I had a friend, I wanted to take her and show her where the Eagles were. She has a scooter, and I thought it's a simple matter, and it said the elevator would be out of service indefinitely. I didn't think it would be this long. It is very difficult for us that do genealogy to go up three flights of steps, ask a librarian for help. Surely, the city can find money somewhere to fix that elevator. That is all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tilden. I've actually received a number of emails and phone calls about that same elevator. Mr. Hamilton, would you be in a position to answer those questions regarding the elevator?
Yes, Madam President. So first, in the interim, until it is repaired, they actually do have an alternative. It's not as convenient, certainly, as we want it to be. There is a freight elevator in the back of the library, and so anybody who needs to use an elevator, and we know there's a lot of folks that use the library that need the use of an elevator, if they'll go to the library and they're at the front desk, they'll get taken back to the other elevator that's normally not used by the public. So it is certainly not as nice as the normal public elevator, and is not nearly as convenient. There is a suitable workaround until we can get the primary elevator fixed. The staff has been working through the solution there. Actually, the elevator needs to be replaced, so we've got the bid in, the bids in, working through contract in order to do that. It's not a money issue, the funding is available, and now it's just going through our normal procurement process to have a company come in and actually completely remove the existing elevator, modify the elevator shaft, and install a new elevator. So that will start pretty soon. We're probably still, and I don't have the specific timeline, we're probably still at least a few weeks, if not a couple of months, away from that being done, so people will continue, need to continue to use the alternative until we have that done, but that is moving forward, and it's not a funding issue.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Clean.
I guess, piggybacking on what Mr. Hamilton said, I had a meeting over at the library. The library, and of course, they're not happy about the elevator being broken, but they have marked it, and I think they'll do everything they can to be accommodating to get people up on the other elevator. They do have it marked, and they do have staff alerted to it to help you.
Thank you, Mr. Clean.
And I might just add in on this, you know, the library board is responsible for the library buildings, but we help others. Same thing we're doing with early works, I think, will be on the agenda either tonight or next week. They have air conditioners out, which have to be replaced to the tune of $60,000. This is helping the library out to the tune of $100,000, I think $145,000 was what the bids came in at. So it is a very expensive proposition to do, but we know that we cannot leave the library without an elevator. They do have the workaround. The workaround is just totally not acceptable to the standards that we have to do as a city, so we will have that fixed, but it will not be a quick fix. Just know that. It will take several months to take out an elevator, put another elevator in, redo the shaft, and do everything that we've got to do, so it will not be a quick fix. It will be as quick as it possibly can be, but evidently, they only make elevators for certain shafts when they need them, and so it takes a while to make those, so we will move along as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Any other comments from anyone? Thank you. Move on now to the next person to sign up, Richard S. Miller. Subject, ICE enforcement. Mr. Miller.
Richard Miller, 1319 Locust Avenue, 35801. Words have meaning, and words, particularly by elected officials like yourselves, have particular weight. Today, the president described his immigration efforts by describing them as follows, quote, "It's a military operation," unquote. This is problematic, irrational, counterproductive, anti-American, and likely illegal. If supported by Huntsville, you put people at risk. We put people at risk. The Posse Comitatus Act, U.S. Code 1385, limits powers of the federal government using military, the military, to enforce domestic policies. This is not a 19th-century artifact. It was passed in 1878, but it's been updated multiple times over the past 60 years and is a key element of our civil society. This act says, quote, "Whoever accepting cases and under circumstances expressly authorized by an act of Congress willfully uses any part of military force as a posse comitatus or otherwise to execute the laws shall be fined or imprisoned," unquote. This applies to sanctioning officials, as well as civilians and police acting as part of a military effort within the country. Don't put them at risk, please. In addition, in 2006, U.S. Code 1076 was amended to include the operation of military force to suppress activities as deemed necessary by the president solely. But the bipartisan discomfort and illegal actions enabled by this led to its full repeal less than two years later. It was repealed from the Insurrection Act of 1807, specifically because it put people at risk. Beyond the legalities, we must remember that these immigration efforts... Beyond the legalities, we must remember that these immigration efforts, we're dealing with people, you've heard some of those stories today, their lives and our lives. Many here have addressed the emotional aspect, which is important, these are people. But I ask you to act rationally. If this is a decision, you look towards debating among yourselves. Use the data and address and prioritize the issues. Deportation of immigrants is not and should not be a priority. For example, in the last 30 years, men in the age group 18 to 49, immigrants, both legal and undocumented, have been one-half to one-fifth as likely to be incarcerated or commit violent crimes compared to native U.S.-born citizens. This is an upside-down priority. Immigrant communities, documented or otherwise, must be able to trust law enforcement, or they won't cooperate as witnesses or report crimes. Doing otherwise puts our society and citizens at risk. Law enforcement and immigration must be separate.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Your time is up.
Thanks.
Next person to comment is Danny Upton. Subject is ICE enforcement. Mr. Upton.
My name is Danny Upton. I'm actually a resident of Hazel Green. I live at 112 Meadow Ridge Drive in Hazel Green, but I am a native of Huntsville and grew up here in Madison County. My family have been here in Madison County since the 1800s, and have been here in North America since prior to the founding of the United States. Nevertheless, even as a working-class white boy from rural North Alabama, when I graduated law school, I found myself working as an immigration attorney. In fact, I was commissioned as a missionary attorney of the United Methodist Church, and was sent by the church throughout the country to represent particularly vulnerable immigrants. I'm speaking specifically about women and children who were victims of domestic violence, human trafficking, and sexual exploitation. And this was a real education for me, something that, an education at the next level that I really didn't get in law school. Because I never, I never knew anything about immigration. Immigration impacted my life not, not one whit. And I think that's true for a lot of us as American citizens. We come to this topic from a place of ignorance, and we don't know a lot about immigration, we don't know a lot about immigrants. We've in fact forgotten our own immigrant stories, and our own immigrant histories. But I'm reminded of a particular client that I had who lived in a community where 287G was very much in effect, and there was a child who was sexually abused by a neighbor, and the parents didn't call the police to report that crime against that child because the parents were fearful of self-reporting their own lack of immigration status. Now, that was a tragedy for that child, that was a tragedy for that whole family, but it was really a tragedy for everybody. It meant necessarily that there was a predator on the streets. It meant necessarily that there would be another victim, because our laws, the rules that we implemented disincentivized victims and witnesses of crimes coming forward and reporting the crimes that they had either witnessed or been victim to. I don't want to see that happen here in the community where I live. And it's not breaking the law for the Huntsville Police Department to refrain from enforcing federal immigration law. There are many actors in our judicial system. That's why the, the city attorney doesn't do the job of the judge, right? Or why the judge doesn't do the job of the city attorney. There are many different roles. Sometimes those roles are complementary, sometimes those roles are adversarial, but the important thing is that everybody be aware of what his role is, and that people actually, you know, stay in their lane, if you will, because the failure to do so invites exactly the sort of abuse that I saw in, among my clients, and I would hate to see exactly that sort of tragedy be repeated here in the community where we live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Upton. The next person to sign up is Beth Ann Dawson. Subject: ICE Enforcement. Ms. Dawson, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Beth Ann Dawson, 323 Forest Park Court in Huntsville, 35806. That's in the Sherwood Park neighborhood. After growing up here, for, I was, I've been in Huntsville like 21 years, I moved away for eight years and then moved back to Huntsville almost three years ago. I'm very blessed to have made dozens of friendships with immigrants and international students in our state and in our city. I've traveled to 13 different countries. I worked in the International Office at Auburn University, and I taught English in the Middle East, specifically one of the countries that's on President Trump's banned list. Growing up in Alabama, the heart of the South, I've always prided myself with being taught and modeled the best hospitality by my Southern mother and grandmothers, and so you can imagine my surprise at being outdone in hospitality in nearly every country I've been to, especially the Arab countries. I was always welcomed in as their own, despite their different worldviews and religions. They were proud to call me their friend. When I moved back to Huntsville, I was overjoyed when I, when I met my Arab neighbors from that very same country, just three houses down. It was really amazing. My Arab neighbors babysit my children during our neighborhood Bible study every week. They bring me fresh bread and delicious dishes and sweets and mint tea, and when I was just days away from delivering my son on Christmas Day last year, I wasn't able to travel to my family get-together because I was so pregnant, and my Arab neighbors showed up at my door with Christmas dinner. I have been moved by their sacrificial giving and their extreme hospitality, and they're from a country that's torn by civil war. They have no home to go back to. Sherwood Park, just right across the street from the Space and Rocket Center, is their home. Every time there's another headline screaming that our government doesn't want them here, I call them, I visit them. I remind them that I love them and that I want them here, that I will speak for them, that I'm proud to have them as my friends and neighbors. On November 9th, every single foreign friend of mine, and I have many, suddenly felt that maybe they're not wanted here. My friends who came to America to receive the best education and have earned or are still earning their postgraduate degrees and doing essential and creative research right here in Huntsville and in our state, they suddenly felt scared, even if they were in right standing in their immigration. Would their work visas be denied? Should they search for jobs back home after graduation? These are the best and the brightest from their countries and offer so much to our society. By making Huntsville a sanctuary city, they can continue thriving here, working their businesses, raising their families, and pursuing their degrees and their careers without fear of the law enforcement showing up at their homes, whether they're in right standing with immigration or not. I'm here tonight to ask you to extend Southern hospitality. It's who we are, from, from the city of Huntsville to these foreigners residing among us, for it wasn't that long ago that we were foreigners in a distant land. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. The next person to speak is Deborah Barrow Smith. Subject is ICE. Ms. Barrow Smith?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity. I will be brief. I'm here, as you said, representing ICE and supporting that we do have an ICE-free community. You know, our police officers are part of this community. We've already had an issue with trust between them and certain other communities. When we, if you allow them to become as ICE officers, I call it Gestapo, if you allow it, then you just don't continue to perpetrate, perpetuate fear within the immigrant community, but it also opens up a lot of wounds for other communities that are still fearful. We have a wonderful police chief who has been working constantly to bridge the gap between law enforcement and every community. We do not need anything that's going to set that back, and it will be a trickle-down effect. As many have said, there are things that happens. I like to educate about human trafficking. When you have people that are fearful, you have other people that we call our American citizens that takes advantage of that fear. And those people that are fearful will not report, as you've heard here, the abuse that they may go through. You have groups here in this state that are constantly fighting human trafficking, domestic violence, child abuse. Let me tell you something, that is not a good feeling. I am a product of child sexual and physical and emotional abuse. I know the fear that goes with it. I know the pain. I had it done to me when it was a dirty little secret that people didn't talk about. But praise God for a grandmother that said, "You can be and do anything you want to." And family, my great-great-grandparents are, were, they're deceased now, immigrants. My family is Cape Verdean. So when I hear and see all of this going on, it breaks my heart, because I say, "What if this was like this when my family came over here across the Marion Street? What if this was like this when I was being abused and didn't have a grandmother to speak up for me?" So let's stop perpetrating fear, and I ask the city council to work with the mayor and understand that this is human rights as well as civil rights. And by the way, they're not all illegals. We have some here that are working and paying into the system, and they do jobs that nobody else wants to do. I don't know how many people here wants to work in 100-degree weather in the, in the fields, okay? So I'm asking that you look at everything, and you consider the outcome, and you listen to your residents.
Thank you, Ms. Barrow Smith. Your time is up. The next person to sign up is Mary Crouch. Subject is ICE enforcement.
Hi, my name is Mary Crouch. I'm, I live at 10015 Todd Mill Road, Huntsville, Alabama. I'm a native of Huntsville. I'm a Spanish teacher in Madison City. Many of my students come from families of immigrants, for example, from the Middle East or Latin America, and I feel like I've witnessed their fear after the presidential election. They may or may not have undocumented family members, but the idea that they could be detained for that status makes them unable to focus on learning and making a future for themselves. On a different note, I'd like to refer to the past remark about Huntsville being a dumping ground. I respectfully suggest that any interested refer to the book, "They Take Our Jobs and Twenty Other Myths About Immigration" by Aviva Chomsky. Even documented immigrants have fear of being falsely identified as documented. For example, I have Colombian friends who have recently told me that they had job offers in the United States, and they're afraid to take them, because they don't want to be falsely accused as undocumented and then held detained because of that. In fact, these are all well-educated young adults who would benefit our city, but are too afraid to come here, because they're afraid that they'll be identified as felons. On a personal note, my sister's sister-in-law is newly arrived from Nigeria. My sister's husband is Nigerian, he's a U.S. citizen now, naturalized. But my, my sister's sister-in-law is here now completing her master's, and she's afraid for her safety, even though she is documented, she has a student visa, because of the prejudices involved in that. Also, I'd like to say that I've often been on the other side of this. I've been the foreign student or the foreign worker in Spanish-speaking countries, and that's, those are places where a lot of immigrants to the U.S. are from. In those countries, I've never felt the same kind of scrutiny or insecurity because of who I am. I urge the council and the city of Huntsville to be welcoming to immigrants to this city like I have been welcomed in so many international communities. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to sign up is Dale Jackson. Subject is sanctuaries. Is Mr. Jackson here? I think he said he was coming late. We haven't seen him, we'll just hold him to the end. The next person to sign up is William Derrick P. Whitlow. Subject is Prince Hall Masons of Alabama, Temple Lodge Number 98. Mr. Whitlow, welcome.
Thank you. I would like to bring-
Could you, just for the record, identify yourself and your address, please, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
Derrick Whitlow, 900 Jordan Lane, Huntsville, Alabama, 35816.
Thank you very much.
I want to begin just briefly by saying it is our esteemed privilege and honor to be with you tonight, to Mayor Tommy Battle and this great council of great leaders for the city of Huntsville, Alabama. I am here to remind you that Prince Hall Masons have always been observing and have always been involved in the building of civilization, from the time of the Revolutionary War to the time of the Great War and World War II, even to the time of, of the Civil War and all of the other battles that have taken place for our freedom. At this time, we are coming tonight to offer the services of Prince Hall Masons of Alabama, bringing you greetings from our Grand Master Cory D. Hawkins, and also from our Grand District Deputy Anthony Johnson, District 17, here in North Alabama. There are about 14 lodges that are active in this city. We solicit your prayers, and we also pray for you. We believe in acting on the square and employing justice and freedom in all that we do, and we have a special interest in our veterans. If you're not aware of it, but Prince Hall Masons find their origin in the military lodges of this country. And if you're not aware of it, which I'm sure that you are, John Hunts was also a Freemason, the founder of this immigrant city. And so we want to again extend congratulations to you, and we also solicit our prayers for the great decisions that you are making on behalf of this city. And we want to let you know, as we have communicated to Councilman Kling and to many others, that we are here to render our services, and we want to caution you that we ought to always look to the supreme in grand deity before we make any decision that would affect the lives of others. These are just a few of the members of Temple Lodge Number 98, which represents the District 17, North Alabama, and there are many appendageant bodies, from the Knights of the East and West, to the Shriners, and to the great builders of civilization known as Freemasons. But preferably, at this time, we represent Prince Hall Masons. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being with us tonight.
Madam President?
Mr. Kling.
Madam President? Oh, thank you. I had a chance to visit with members of the lodge before the council meeting. I've had, you know, contact with them beforehand by telephone. And I wanted to ask if we could let them make contact with Jeff Easter, the city facilities director, if he's here, and also Michelle Jordan from Community Development. I think there might be some things that could be worked out with some of the programs, perhaps on a parallel to the World Changers Program, where the community development might have the tools, paints, wood, the nails and everything, and the members of the lodge might be able to provide the, the labor and assistance to work on housing rehab programs in various neighborhoods throughout the city. And Mr. Easter, who's at the microphone, and I know we need to move on, if perhaps if, if y'all can meet outside, they are interested to see if the city might have access to any dilapidated old surplus buildings that, you know, I guess before they were demolished, you know, might be something they could use and assist with.
I'd be glad to meet with them outside, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We'll let you all take care of that. Thank you again for joining us. The next person to sign up is Kenneth Rory. Subject is building refurbishment or purpose. Is Mr., Ms. Rory?
Good afternoon. I'm Kenneth Rory. I reside in Athens, Alabama, and I'm-
Could you give us your address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's 27266 Capshaw Drive-
Thank you.
-in Athens. Proud member of Temple Lodge 98 here in Huntsville. I think I can yield my time, because it was just answered, and it was on that subject that Councilman Kling had just brought up.
Thank you.
But thank you for your time, and thank you for having us here.
Well, we will let you connect with, with some of our good folks to talk about those issues. Thank you for joining us.
Will do, thank you.
The next person is Dale Mitchell. Subject is meeting. Mr. Mitchell.
Hello. My name is Dale Mitchell, 6018 Rickwood Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, 35810. Uh, we also provide over 400 meals, hot nutritious meals every month, uh, to the homeless veterans here in Huntsville and also, uh, other homeless, uh, citizens here in Huntsville as well. Uh, basically what we are looking forward today is, uh, working with the city of Huntsville and providing us, uh, resources, uh, whether it be, uh, heater fans or other supplies to help us, uh, with our mission.
And I believe that's what we're going to be talking about. You're going to be meeting with somebody in the city to talk about-
Correct.
Very good. All right. We will let you make that connection then.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Is, has Mr. Jackson joined us yet? Dale Jackson? Um, we have, uh, that's, that's the last of the people who have signed up, but we do have, I notice, at least one Boy Scout in the audience. Um, young man, would you like to come to the audience and identify yourself? Tell us which troop you're from and... You want to come to the microphone? That way we can all hear you and we don't want to make you more nervous, but there are people at home who are watching this on TV who will hear you also.
Hi, I'm Julian Stevens. Um, I'm from Troop 70, which meets at First Baptist Church, and I'm just here to, you know, take notes and do stuff for some merit badges.
Wonderful.
Yeah, so-
We welcome you and we applaud you for being here.
Thank you.
Many thanks to all of you who have come tonight to share your thoughts with us. One of the hallmarks of a democracy is the opportunity to engage in civic discord, to speak passionately, fervently, and respectfully about matters, uh, which we may or may not agree upon. And we've certainly seen a diversity of issues raised with us tonight and we thank you for taking your time to be here. We listen to you as a council. Um, Mr. Upton challenged us to remember our own immigration stories and I remember my mother and my grandmother who were immigrants from Czechoslovakia and I remember them studying for their citizenship exams. And I have great respect for those who come to a strange country to learn a foreign language and to adopt foreign customs and to learn in a new pla, live in a new place. Um, I'm also reminded, though, that what we're talking about tonight are federal issues and those federal issues should be addressed with federal authorities. Um, that's not our jurisdiction. Uh, we have each taken an oath to uphold the Constitution and we are bound by that oath to uphold constitutional law. But I'm grateful for you being here tonight and thank you for sharing your thoughts. Um, Mayor Battle?
Uh, Madam President, let me just kind of, um, echo, uh, some of what you said. Uh, each one of us up here, when we took our oath of office, we took an oath of office to, uh, uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Alabama and the laws thereof. Uh, and, uh, and the laws thereof is the place where we will be. We are a lawful society. We follow the law and we do what the law, law asks us to do, uh, and we make sure that we interpret the law, uh, right. We had someone who, um, sent in a letter and, uh, the chief answered it very well today. He said, "Uh, I can assure everyone, there is no movement or expectation of new or altered policy as it relates to how Huntsville Police Department serves our community. We acknowledge and appreciate that Huntsville is very diverse. Our focus has been and will continue to be to help provide a good quality of life for everyone through fair and consistent enforcement of life safety laws. We appreciate and share your concern for others in our community. Our oath and mission statement, as sworn police officers, demand our defense of constitutional rights of all people with compassion, fairness, integrity, and professionalism." Thank you. I think that, that kind of answers it. Right now, we have been asked to do nothing. We have been asked not to, to change no, anything. And we, as a community, will be a community of laws, though, and we will, we will follow the law. That's what makes us a great, um, a great nation, a great state, a great city, because you know what to expect from, uh, from what you find in the law. And each of us have pledged that we will follow that. So that's, that's where, uh, as an administration, that's where, uh, my administration is. Council members may have different ideas or different, uh, different thoughts, but that's where our, uh, administration is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Uh, we will move on now to item number eight, Huntsville Utilities items. We have no items from Huntsville Utilities. Board appointments, we have no board appointments to be voted on. Uh, board appointment nominations. The chair wishes to nominate Sidney White for reappointment to the Huntsville Madison County Mental Health Board, Place 7, for a term to expire April 1st, 2023. Are, is there any other nominations to be placed in the record?
Madam President?
Mr. Clean.
Uh, I will strongly support you, uh, on that candidate, but I believe under the rules of the council that, uh, we're not allowed to make nominations until the month before the term expires.
Oh, thank you for keeping me straight. So we will hold that for the-
But again, for the record, I, I'm, I'm your, uh, your secondor-
We'll be there to nominate him at the next council meeting.
I'm behind you 99.9% sure.
We will both nominate him at the next meeting. Thank you for keeping us straight. Are there any other nominations that are being, being made less than one month before they are expired? We're just trying to get on top of things and keep them from piling up. Um, we'll move on to item number 10, approval of expenditures. 10A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment from the Finance Committee. Mr. Clean.
Thank you, Madam President. Move for payment of vouchers in the amount of $6,777,743.53.
Second.
Uh, motion has been made by Mr. Clean, second by Mr. Culver, all in favor of approving, uh, the expenditures for payment. Please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, does the Finance Committee have a report, Mr. Clean?
No, Madam President. Thank you.
Uh, number 11, communications from the mayor. Mr. Battle, you have the floor.
Madam President, um, excuse me, Madam President, um, these cookies were put on our desks, uh, this, this evening. Uh, we are in scale-back competition against two other council members-
I make a motion that the cookies be referred to the Finance Committee?
And being, uh, being under competition, it says, "Two hefty boys who Mr. Riley and I are in the competition-"
Aptly named.
"-from Huntsville Strong," who would be, uh, Madam President, and another council member who is right down here. So I want to, at this time, make sure that I give to Lodge 98 these cookies. I would like to pass those along to you and ask you to eat them to keep me from being a hefty boy much longer. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You can give them to the Boy Scout, too. There's calories in every sniff.
That is called regifting and, um, and Ms. Mrs. Battle says I'm very good at it. Uh, this, this weekend, lots of activities happening. Mardi Gras Parade Saturday, uh, starts on Meridian Street near the Furniture Factory. Uh, there is a hackathon, uh, that will be at Low, uh, at Lincoln Mills at the, uh, and it will start at 10 o'clock. Uh, I think most of the hackathon teams are already in place. And also this next week, Geo Huntsville Summit will start on Monday, 20, um, February 27th at 8:00 AM. And also this is Innovate Huntsville Week, where there'll be local events throughout the week. For, uh, more information, check out on Innovate Huntsville's website. Um, and also, uh, mark your calendars, uh, Saturday week will be the Community Kite Festival on March, I believe it's 4th, not 5th, at John Hunt Park, uh, put on by Asha Karan, which is a great, uh, great organization, uh, that works for community involvement and make sure that we are an inclusive community. So that's one of the things that's, uh, very important to us. And it goes on from 11 to 2. I would encourage everyone here to bring out your kites. Uh, everybody flying a kite for a better community and a community that is an inclusive community is a great thing, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We'll now move on to communications from council members. We'll begin with Councilman, uh, Russell.
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Battle, you're an honorable person. If you had passed those cookies down to here, I would have eaten them. So thank you.
Team member.
Get past me to get them.
But if you want to buy a supper tonight, please go ahead. Uh, the Huntsville Sports Commission hosted the Alabama High School Wrestling Championship at the Prose Arena last weekend. It was a great tournament and several local wrestlers won their weight class and received medals. Uh, especially noted, Jimison did really well. Uh, they had, uh, a child with a great story, won the 106 weight class. Huntsville High had a champion. Uh, Lee had some medalists. Huntsville High had several finalists and it was a great event and we want to get more of the public to attend that event. So, uh, please next year, put it in your calendar and show up and support these, uh, young athletes. Uh, I'm hoping that we can welcome Matt Aiken to our community, uh, here soon. Uh, certainly want to get behind the school system and I hope everybody will rally, uh, around him and our schools. Uh, today I had the pleasure of visiting Huntsville High and as Mr. Clean has been on the media, uh, we're having parking problems over there. It's something that's been going on since I was in high school, but it seems to be a lot worse now. And, uh, we're trying to, uh, Mr. Clean and I certainly want to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. And it's interesting for me, because for many years representing the area around the merch center, I've been complaining to the school system about them, uh, parking in our area and now I'm getting calls from the Huntsville High parents of why their kids can't park in the neighborhood over in your district, Mr. Clean?
I told them to call you.
Yeah, yeah. So I've been saying, I don't know why they can't park in the neighborhood. It seems like a good idea to me. Uh, but anyway, we're working on that solution. A solution, a long-term solution needs to be found. There's 500 or so kids parking in the neighborhoods and it's just not working. Uh, so enjoyed my visit at Huntsville High. I've also been to Blossomwood School for lunch, had a great time there and also to Randolph School for lunch. And so, uh, things are going well in our community and, uh, uh, our schools are doing well and our children are being educated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Mr. Clean.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I guess, uh, is, want to kind of begin my comments on a somber note. A longtime friend, uh, Jim Payne, who was born and raised in Huntsville, uh, died last week and, uh, was buried yesterday, uh, from injuries that he'd received, uh, previously in a, in a car wreck. Uh, Jim was someone who I grew up with and, uh, um, we, uh, certainly will miss him a, a great deal. Um, want to thank all those, including Mr. Timberlake, who came out to my town meeting, uh, Monday night. A lot of good discussion took place on, on neighborhood issues and, uh, uh, always appreciate the good discussion that we have. It's a no-holds-bar. Uh, only rule we have at the town meetings is that nobody wears a, uh, a necktie. And, uh, appreciate it because it's a chance, uh, you know, to be in a listening mode, to hear from people, just like at, uh, tonight's meeting. And, uh, we work to solve problems. Uh, let me just piggyback off of what, uh, uh, Councilman Russell said. Uh, we are working in a positive direction with the, uh, school system concerning the neighborhood impacts of, uh, students parking on the streets and in some cases, uh, we've had cars on both sides of the street actually impeding emergency vehicles having the ability to get through. Uh, Tommy Brown, uh, from Transportation, Dan Sanders, uh, from Traffic Engineering have done yeoman's job working, uh, with the neighborhood residents and also working with the, uh, uh, counterparts from the school system to find, uh, a solution. Uh, one thing that is coming out of this whole process, uh, is, uh, that the beginning of next Monday, uh, the, the school system's going to begin, uh, satellite parking at Mayfair Park, so that, uh, that will open up, uh, I don't know, roughly 80 to 100 parking spaces, which would help provide some parking places for, uh, for the kids, uh, who, uh, aren't able to park in, on the school campus. Uh, Walker McGinnis, uh, has been meeting, uh, with, uh, Beth Wilder and the school board and, uh, uh, some of the office staff to, uh, see about, uh, coming up with a more permanent solution for Huntsville High School, uh, can, along the lines of relocating the maintenance facility and opening that up for, uh, additional parking spaces, uh, that could be used for, for Huntsville High School. So, uh, I think as Councilman Russell will have said, we want to work with the school system. We knew, we've got a, uh, a very fine gentleman who has stepped in as the acting superintendent and I think we got an outstanding candidate who's going to be coming in as the, uh, the new superintendent. And, uh, I think, uh, we've always prided ourselves. I think Councilwoman Robinson would agree with me, as former school board members coming over to the city council, that, uh, we feel it is very important to this community that the schools are as good as they can be and that we have a positive working relationship, uh, just as, uh, the mayor has been, uh, working very closely with the superintendents over the year. And, um, that's all I have meant, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Clean. Councilman Keith.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say that, uh, let the record show, I am also in the scale-back and I did not get cookies, so I don't know if you consider me not a threat or-
I will get, I will be happy to get you some.
You know. Um, but on a serious note, I want to say, if I remember the words correct, um, Mark McMeese said apathy is the enemy of democracy. Everybody who has stood up, everybody who came here to support, to relay how they feel about this issue is unbelievably important. And, um, though we sit here and try and be objective, we have to take in the views of all. Uh, we don't get to be selective and personalize our politics. So my hat's off to everybody who took the time to write out their expressions and emotions and how they feel on both sides, because that is true democracy, the ability to be involved. And I thank you for coming out. On a more serious note, thank you. Um, on a more serious note, I want to just tell quickly, it was, I think it was Thursday, I reached out to Captain John Hamilton and, and, and the cap have been wonderful. I get in the car for a ride along. We immediately get a call. The guy's name is Officer Woods. We ride down a very familiar path. I'm born and raised in Northwest Huntsville. We get to Valley Park and it's this beautiful young lady and I don't want to say her name, but she's at the old, the seasoned age of 85. She opens the door and says, "I have a problem." She said, "I'm not sure what happened, but I heard a loud bang as I sat and watched my TV." As we enter, um, the police handle themselves in a way I've, I've never seen before, comforting her before they understand what probably happened. This young lady was sitting at her chair, watching television, arguing, she said, between herself on whether to not buy something or buy something. Um, and a bullet ricocheted and hit the top of her roof, came straight directly down and hit the coffee table in front of her. Now, that would have caused a heart attack for an old man like me. But she sat there, not realizing what happened, just seeing the interaction. And what I saw was the individuals that I grew up with, police officers that used to be my friends, coming to that home and once they let that lady know, showing her the bullet that had come through her home that was one foot away from hitting her. Um, and she started to understand the gravity of what happened. They consoled her and really comforted her. And I have, I remember, and I already had respect for the police department, but how they handled themselves that day was very respectful. So that leads me into my other point. We have to have an increased conversation about how police, uh, who have a very tough job, interact with the community that, that they police. Uh, on March 20th, at AAA, at 6:00 PM, we will have that intentional conversation. Um, and again, I had a wonderful experience on my ride along, but we want to increase the equation. Great citizens and great police make a great community. Uh, and as everybody else who, who's taught about our Huntsville Police Department, uh, we have to have that conversation intentionally to come out with some outcome-based model. Um, but yeah, I, I truly wanted to say hat off to Chief, if he's here, for those officers that I was with and, you know, to find out what happened, uh, and to see this young lady feel comforted by our Huntsville Police Department has a gravity to it that you would have to be there to understand. Um, furthermore, I'd like to piggyback off of what Councilman Russell said. I was there. Man, I don't know how you score touchdowns or make baskets in wrestling, but I was trying to figure it out and in a matter of maybe 20 minutes, I got it. And it was the last six seconds and this young man from Jimison, who was nervous, threw up, didn't eat, um, was to make history. And the crowd's going wild and he's about to be pinned to lose the match and all I hear is all these individuals from Jimison. And we, none of us understood. We were like, shoot a three. And we got a collective voice for six seconds that said, "Don't give up." And we said that for six seconds. Don't give up, don't give up, don't give up, don't give up. And he never gave up. And he's the first champion, state champion for Jimison in wrestling because he didn't give up. And I'm, I just think that is a, a, an amazing moment that I even captured on video to see his story, know him personally, and for the Jimison Jaguars to have that as a story of the first wrestling champion, a kid who comes from a tough background in Northwest Huntsville, but he didn't give up. So my hat's off to the Jimison coaching staff and everybody that is involved. And I want the city of Huntsville to be proud that they have a state champion who didn't give up. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Key. Mr. Culver.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, yield my time.
Thank you. Um, and I will simply finish by saying that those cookies may have looked like sabotage, but they were actually economic development, because if you notice, they were from Whole Foods. And Whole Foods is one of the newest retailers here in town. We have a whole model based on return on investment that the city has made in that complex over there. So I was simply supporting that effort and wanting to share that with Mr. Riley and Mr. Battle. If y'all thought it was something else, you can think that. Um, we had the pleasure last week of attending the state of the schools, um, breakfast. We had the pleasure last week of attending the State of the Schools breakfast. It was wonderful to see reports from all three school systems and see the great things that are being done in Madison County. I was particularly proud of the report that was done for Huntsville City Schools because Mr. Tom Drake, our interim superintendent, made it. I worked with him for years at Grissom High School when I was PTA president there and when all five of my kids went through Grissom. And he has done a remarkable job of stepping into a leadership void when nobody else was really willing to do it. And he took that challenge on and has done a wonderful job of keeping the ship on course. Also, at that meeting, Dr. Aiken came. Again, he hadn't even signed a contract, but he was willing to get up on that stage and let everybody meet him. And we look forward to having him come and welcoming him officially when he joins us on March 1st. He will be the right leader at the right time. We had the opportunity yesterday to tour the new Grissom High School and to see what's going on there. It's well on its way to being ready to be opened in August of this school year for the new student body to join there. They're already having tours on Tuesdays, Tuesday afternoon tours of students and teachers who can come over and see the school and get used to it and see all that's going to be available there for the students. It will be a great strength to the community and we look forward to seeing that open in August. I also attended the Dito Board meeting last week. Dito has recently accepted the deed to the Madison County Boat Harbor and has been overseeing the transition of those, the Boat Harbor into the Dito Marina. And at that meeting, the Transition Committee introduced five different options that Madison County Boat Harbor boat owners have with regard to working with Dito and transitioning their boats over to Dito. And a public meeting will be held on March 6th at 5:00 at the Boat Harbor where those issues will be discussed with the public. So I encourage anybody who's interested in that to attend. And I also, again, just personally want to thank all of you for being here and participating in the democratic process tonight. You did so with respect, with energy, and we hope you will come again.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, can I grab Councilman Culver's time a little bit? I wanted to show respect to the lodge. I'm so sorry I was talking, I had to bring it down everything.
They gave them cookies.
Absolutely. But let me tell you, the importance of this is that this is not them just now getting started. They have been a part of the green team. They've been a part of mentoring. I myself, an individual who's already out there, has been a mentor to me. And I just want to say my respects and homage to you individuals as a collective for what you've already done. And it is a blessing to see you now as a collective asking for more that has a gravity and value to it that I think needs to be recognized. So thank you.
Thank y'all for being here. We have a long agenda ahead of us, so the mayor has suggested that it might be an opportune time for us to take a break. So we will take a five-minute break and come back at 7:38 and continue with the agenda. It's not on.
Uh huh.
Uh-uh.
It should be. No, both of those are on. Both of those need to be on.
Both of those are on. And my...
Try it again.
Would everyone please take their... Well, I'm waiting for everybody to sit down. Oh, it's on now. On now.
Hi. Thank you for coming. Good ideas, good thinking.
Council meeting is called back in session. It's 7:42. We will move on now with items of business. We will begin with item 13, unfinished business items for action. 13A is ordinance number 17-084, amending ordinance number 89-79, classification and salary ordinances was introduced at the February 9th, 2017, regular council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Byron Thomas. There you are. You moved. Mr. Thomas, will you please educate us on this item?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. Byron Thomas, Human Resources. 13A and actually 13B are two items that are on the agenda based upon position classification audits conducted by the Human Resources Department. What the mayor thought it would be a good idea just to go over that process one more time, just to reiterate it, as well as just to familiarize the council on that process again. So what I'd like to do is take a few moments to go over a presentation we have that outlines the position classification audit process. The audit process is, it can be initiated by our employees or it can be initiated by our department heads. And the reason that an employee might ask for a position classification audit or the department head, one reason is the employee thinks their position classification is incorrect or it may have changed in some kind of way. Or the employee has been assigned new duties that may suggest that the position classification is not correct. Or sometimes we also have to establish new position classifications that will warrant a position audit. But how that works is, we sent out a form, it's called a job information questionnaire. Most people refer to it as a J.I.Q. HR receives that completed job information questionnaire and all the necessary information. Once that is received, HR sets up a meeting with the employees, the supervisor and/or the department heads to further discuss that job information questionnaires, as well as any supporting documentation. And then HR evaluates it based upon the position classification system, based upon the classification factors. Those factors include anything from job knowledge, purpose and scope, internal, external contacts, physical effort involved, job complexity, work environments, work control, job hazard, as well as supervision. Once we evaluate that, we ensure that the position classification reflects its current duties and responsibilities, and then we will assign the appropriate salary grade and/or job title. Then HR will submit a recommendation, as we've done tonight, to the city council for approval. If no changes warrant, then the employee is notified and that audit process is closed. But what you have tonight is those positions that need to be reclassified. As some history, I thought it'd be good to include it again as an update. Since 2012, Human Resources has conducted over 130, well, 130 position classification reviews or audits. Eighty-one of those positions or 62% of them, there was a salary grade change. Twenty-one positions are 16%. It might have been just a title change, but not necessarily a salary grade change. And then 28 of those positions are 22%. Those positions were deemed to be already properly classified. So items 13A and 13B on tonight's agenda recommends a change to the salary grade classification system and/or job titles for positions resulting from this process. So 13A is to modify the classification system and then you get to 13B, it's just to update the accordance funding budget item.
Are there any questions for Mr. Thomas? Mr. Keith?
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Who initiates the audit process? I'm sorry if I missed that.
That's okay. It can be initiated by an employee who believes that their position classification has changed or it can be initiated by the department head if they believe, if they have assigned new duties or if they believe the classification has changed as well.
So this isn't somebody coming saying, you know, I need to get paid more money? Is this the process of somebody saying they need to get paid more money? I guess that's what my question is.
Well, people might imply that, but what we have to do, the Human Resources has to evaluate that to see if it warrants any type of classification change or grade change.
Got you.
So it's not a process of just saying, "I want more money." It's saying, "Something in my job has substantially changed. I'm doing additional duties. The nature of the work that I'm doing has changed. I'm working more hours."
That is correct. It has to be based upon those classification factors and something has to have changed in the job title or position to warrant that.
Otherwise, you'd have everybody asking.
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding 13A? All in favor of approving 13A, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? 13A is approved. 13B is an ordinance number 17-085, amending budget ordinance number 16-659 to modify the authorized strength in various departments introduced at the February 9th, 2017, regular council meeting.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion, Mr. Thomas, you've indicated that this is related also to the audit process and is the result of that audit process. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions, comments? All in favor, indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13C is ordinance number 17-086, annexing 1.00 acre of land lying on the north side of Kennedy Lane and east of Old Big Cove Road, introduced February 9th, 2017, regular council meeting. The chair moves to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Is there any discussion? Ms. Nichols?
This property is approximately one acre. This property is located on the east side of Old Big Cove Road and it's on the north side of Kennedy Lane. This annexation request is for city services as well as city schools. Also, as you can see, this property is adjacent to one of the previous items that we saw last night. And there have been other neighbors that have expressed interest in possible annexation as well, so there may be a few more requests to come.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Nichols? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13D is an ordinance number 17-087, annexing .93 acres of land lying on the north side of Plainview Drive and west of US Highway 431 South, introduced at the February 9th, 2017, regular council meeting.
Moved to approve.
Motion from Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Kling. Any, Ms. Nichols?
This property is also an annexation request. It's .93 acres. This property is currently a single-family detached home and the property owner has petitioned to annex for city services. She primarily would like police and fire protection and she is one of the last of her subdivision in this Plainview area to annex.
Any questions for Ms. Nichols? Discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13E is ordinance number 17-088, amending certain provisions of Chapter 3 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville, Alabama, introduced February 9th, 2017, regular council meeting.
Moved to approve.
Motion from Mr. Russell, Chair seconds. Mr. McGuffey?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, council members. This ordinance modification is to adjust the hours of sales to coordinate with the opening of the entertainment district for downtown. When we have parades and special events downtown, this will allow businesses to be open when those parades are taking place to conduct business.
Any questions for Mr. McGuffey? Discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13F is an ordinance number... 13F is an ordinance number 17-089, amending Chapter 3, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville, Alabama, to add Section 3-29 Butler Green Arts and Entertainment District. This was introduced at the February 9th, regular council meeting.
Moved for approval.
Motion from Mr. Kling, second by the Chair. Mr. McGuffey?
Uh, council members, this is an, uh, an item to create an arts and entertainment district at the Butler Green facility. This is known as Campus 805 and surrounding uses. Um, as you can see on the map on the screen, uh, the boundary is created, is drawn. Uh, it includes many of the uses that you know to exist there today. Uh, we hope to see some of the other structures occupied in the future, so this, this entertainment district will hopefully create interest in this area even more. This will be our fourth boundary in the city of Huntsville. And as you can see on the next slide, we've got the hours of operation posted. Uh, these are the same hours that we have for downtown Huntsville in the Quigley District. These rules that apply in the Quigley District, Meridian District, and Providence are the same, including in this district. The Purple Cups apply, uh, and all of the owners in this district have met and are aware of the rules that we have in place and the expectations that we have in place for this district.
Questions? Mr. Kling?
Just a general comment. You, uh, you and I think the whole urban development department have done a great job of planning this out, uh, you know, doing some tweaking after the downtown, uh, entertainment districts were set up. Feedback I've received from adjacent neighborhood residents has been very popular. In fact, uh, I guess there might even be some interest, maybe somewhere down the line, of actually expanding the district a little bit. Uh, I think there's some nearby properties, I think a property owner who lives, who doesn't live in that area, but who owns property in that area may like to talk to you in the future about, uh, being included in it. But, uh, I think y'all have done a great job in putting it together to this point.
Thanks, sir.
And, and I, and that, we should note that the other entertainment districts have all been added on and expanded as time has gone on, and so that will be the case with this district.
Yes, ma'am. We can modify, uh, and shape this district as we feel necessary.
Mr. Russell?
Madam Chairman, uh, Mr. McGuffey, can you have alcohol in the city park there?
In the city park, it is part of the district, um, and it will be included in the district, so yes.
Is that the way it is all over town?
Uh, our other districts, there are, there's a park in Providence, but it's a private park. Uh, for downtown, there's part of the park that does have the Purple Cup as well. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No, but I think, uh, the gentleman there, I don't know, I don't think he wants to speak, but I think he'd like to talk to you afterward about maybe being added in the future.
I wouldn't like to speak.
It would not be appropriate, sir, at this time. Um, we will have, at the end of the meeting, we will have, um, non-agenda comments, and we would love to hear from you then. If you'd like to talk with Mr. McGuffey, um, offline, we would certainly encourage you to do that.
After you vote?
Yes. Uh, that, this is the time for the council to vote. The time for comments is before and after the meeting. We'll be happy to hear from you then. Any other comments from council members? All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you talk to that gentleman?
We will move to item 14, new business items for introduction. These are for items only for introduction and will be, um, brought to the council for a vote at the March 9th meeting. 14A is an introduction of an ordinance concerning the annexation of .43 acres of land lying on the east side of Harris Road and south of Oakwood Road. Item 14V is an introduction of an ordinance to declare certain equipment surplus and to be sold to LMS Metal Sales, L. Miller &amp; Son, Inc. Item 14C, an introduction of an ordinance declaring certain equipment surplus and to be sold at auction. Again, these items will all be, um, it will be for consideration at the March 9th meeting. We're now moving to item 15, new business items for consideration or action. We have a long list of items for consideration.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to hold 15F, 15L, 15M, 15N, 15O, 15U, 15FF, and 15MM.
Madam Chair, I'd like to hold item I.
And the Chair wishes to hold item N, double C, and double O. Are there any other items? Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to hold 15X.
X. Okay. Any other items? Okay, let's see if we can get those, uh, we will be holding items 15F, I, L, M, N, O, U, X, double C, double F, double M, double O. Did I get them all?
That's correct.
All right, let's see if we can do this. Just a second here.
What was the last one after?
L, M-
X.
N, I-
U, X.
O.
C, D. That's all I needed. Thanks.
U. X. Double C. F. M, M, and O. We almost went into triple letters tonight. All right, everybody have everything? Okay, let me read through all of these items and then I will accept a motion to consolidate, um, the items for approval. Item 15A is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations. 15B is an ordinance to amend budget ordinance number 16-659 by changing appropriating funding in the various departments and funds. 15C is an ordinance to amend budget ordinance number 16-659 by changing the authorized personnel strength in the various departments and funds. 16D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements with the low bidder, meeting specifications as outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptance. 15E is a resolution authorizing the approval of travel expenses. 15G is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke First National Bank of Pulaski Letter of Credit Number 5165020004, preserve at inspiration Phase 1 subdivision. 15H is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke First National Bank of Pulaski Letter of Credit Number 5441280004, preserve at inspiration Phase 1 subdivision. 15J is a resolution authorizing a special employee agreement between the City of Huntsville and Rayola Caldwell. We have deleted 15K. 15P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number 1 to the special employment agreement between the City of Huntsville and Carlos L. Bowden, date November 5, 2015, as adopted by the city council of the City of Huntsville by Resolution Number 15-860. 15Q is a request for authorization to advertise the position of wastewater treatment plant operator, grade 15, and to fill it higher than minimum if necessary. 15R is a request for authorization to advertise and fill the position of water pollution control utility worker, grade 8, and to fill it at higher than minimum if necessary. 15S is a request for authorization to advertise and fill the position of environmental analyst, grade 15. 15T is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Garver LLC for engineering, construction, administration services for 2017 Water Pollution Control Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Contract 1, Project Number 15V is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and S&amp;M, Inc., to accept the assignment of the following contracts owned by Little John Engineering Associates, Inc., as of January 1, 2017. Resolution 10-267, Resolution 12-979, Resolution 13-801, Resolution 15-183, Resolution 15-890, Resolution 15-969, Resolution 16-276, and Resolution 16-333. 15W is a request for authorization to advertise and fill three landscape maintenance worker positions. 15Y is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Huntsville Madison County Communications District for the funding and purchase of Motorola Fire Station Alerting System upgrade. 15Z is a request to advertise and fill the position of zoning enforcement officer, grade 15, at higher than minimum if necessary. 15AA is a request for authorization to advertise and fill budgeted fleet services technical assistant position at higher than minimum if necessary. 15BB is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Goodman Mills and Kaywood, Inc., to develop a heritage development plan for Alabama A&amp;M University. 15DD is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, and Ashakiran, Inc. 15EE is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, and Crisis Services, Inc. 15GG is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, and Natch, Inc. 15HH is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, and Ria Rose Home for Children, Inc. 15II is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, and Salvation Army, Inc. 15JJ is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, and Community Partnership, Action Partnership, Inc. 15KK is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, and New Futures, Inc. 15LL is a resolution authorizing a change order number 2 to the agreement between the City and Integraf Corporation, doing business as Hexagon Safety and Infrastructure for ILEAD's upgrade to Web RMS Bid Direct Software and Services, custom field data conversion and custom web MRS import mugshot interface for the Huntsville Police Department. 15NN is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into development agreement among the City of Huntsville, Fuqua Commons, LLLP, and Huntsville S.J.L.L.C.
Madam Chairman, I move for consolidation approval of 15A through 15E, 15G, 15H, 15J, 15P through T, 15V through W, 15Y through double B, 15DD through double E, 15GG through 15LL, and 15NN.
Bless you. Thank you, Mr. Russell. The Chair seconds. Any discussion?
Madam President, I guess I had a question. Was the Salvation Army item held, or was that part of the consolidation?
That was part of the consolidation. That's item number II. You had asked to hold I. Did you mean to hold II?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I guess, uh-
Okay. Double I. I probably misheard you.
I apologize.
Can- Yeah, okay, all right.
If I could get, uh, Michelle Jordan, could you, uh-
Wait, we've, we've got, we've got a motion consolidation approval on the floor. And if, Madam President, if you're gonna, uh-
That's, that, that's, that's an excellent point. Okay, so we have consolidation and approval. Can we have-
I'm gonna withdraw my motion and let you all figure out what you wanna do, so I withdraw.
It was such a good motion. Mr. Kling, would you like to hold item II for separate consideration?
Yes, okay, and I apologize to everybody, I just-
We will hold double I for separate consideration. Double, double I for a separate consideration. Well, we're just, it'll be easier for you. We will hold sep, double, double I for separate consideration. Do we have a motion now to entertain?
Madam Chairman, I move for consolidation approval of 15A through 15E, 15G through H, 15J, 15P through T, 15V through W, 15Y through double B, 15DD, 15EE, 15GG through 15HH, 15, um, double J through 15LL, and 15NN?
And I'll second the motion.
Do you? Was there a question? And that was correct, okay. Mr. Benyon says it's correct. Looked good to me. Um, any discussion?
And I made the motion, so it was-
You know it was right.
Doesn't matter what they say, let's, we move, and there's no discussion, let's, let's vote.
Is there, uh, all in favor of approving the motion as made, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. We will now proceed to those items that have been held separately. Item 15F. Are we okay? Item 15F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a real estate agreement between the City of Huntsville Moores Mill LLC and Moores Mill Condominium Association, Inc.
I move for approval.
Motion from Mr. Russell, second from the Chair. Mr. Davis?
Council members, yes, this is part of our Restore Roads project. Uh, it's to purchase right-ofway, UND easement, temporary construction easements for, uh, finishing out US 72 in Moores Mill. Uh, should you approve this right-ofway, it's a 50-50 share with Aldott and the City of Huntsville. It's an amount of $161,000 and will provide new access to PPG Industries.
Are there any questions or comments with regard to this item? All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 15I is a request for authorization to hire police officers to bring manpower up to authorize-
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Hamilton?
What is that number? This is just opening the hiring for our next police academy. So, uh, one of the things that, uh, that does look different for, for council and for the public is this year we actually have two police academies. We typically only have one per year. So, the first one for, for this calendar year is actually beginning right now as we, as we speak, so they're going through some, uh, some initial in-process thing, and I think classes start the first week of March. Uh, there'll be a second class this year that'll occur in August, and so the action that, uh, we've asked you to take tonight will open the hiring so that we can begin the recruiting process and, and accept applications for the August police academy.
And Ms. Hamilton, uh, the council would like to know when people apply, how many we get, 'cause we've been hearing that people don't wanna be police officers anymore because of the, the climate out there, and so we'd like to, to have those numbers, and we certainly wanna support the police department.
We can, and I can tell you, uh, you know, so it's, it's a process that I monitor very closely along with the chief, and, and so we get a number of reports, and I can come back to you with the very specific numbers, like for this last class, but, but in general, uh, the, the class that is beginning right now, we did receive a lot fewer applications than normal. So where typically, we were getting 1,000 to 1,200, uh, for a class, uh, the, the numbers that I have is this year we got about half of that, roughly, give or take, and I'll come back to you with the specific numbers. What we did find, though, is, uh, you know, once, once they go through the process, and there is, it is not easy to become a police officer in, in Huntsville. Uh, there are, there are a lot of gates, uh, that, uh, they, that candidates have to pass through. Uh, when you get to the end of that process, and there's, uh, uh, you know, so typically, 1,200 applicants will get boiled down to about 60 to 80, uh, that are considered to be qualified, uh, and are in a kinda that final pool that's considered for job offers. Uh, for this class that's sitting, the, the result was about the same. Even though we got about half the applications, we still had, uh, about the same number of folks who had made it through the gates and were considered highly qualified to be considered. Uh, and, and chief was able to make, uh, I think initially 33 job offers. Uh, I think the, a few have, you know, found other employment, and so I think the class is down to 30 right now. Might be 29, 29 or 30. Uh, but it's a, a great mixture of people, highly qualified candidates, a lot of diversity, uh, and, uh, in, in every way that you measure diversity, this class is representative of that. Uh, and so we're, we're pretty excited about the folks that we have, uh, that are entering the academy process. Now, it's typical for some to still wash out of the academy process. The academy is not easy. Uh, and normally, every class will lose, you know, two or three or four candidates, uh, who, uh, for, for a variety of reasons, since that may still happen, but, uh, I think, I think chief's pretty happy with the group that he has starting, and, uh, we expect to have the same outcome for this class. But, uh, you know, we, we do know a lot fewer people put their names in the hat at the beginning of the process, uh, but we still had, uh, some very high-quality candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Any other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Madam President. So, Mr. Hamilton, regarding your last statement or two with the washout, and we don't hire folk with the purpose of trying to wash any out, but inevitably, it happens when you're looking at 18, 20 weeks of training that intense. Is there any way, and since we are so short with law enforcement, is there any way that we could purposefully overbook, uh, in case we lose two or three because we would have missed that opportunity until the next academy?
Uh, we do, and in fact, that, and when I say 33, that was, that was more than the vacancies that we have in the force. Um, and, and there are some limitations. I mean, you, you really don't want the class to probably more than, to have more than about 35 to 40 folks, because then it becomes more challenging to resource the academy and make sure that they all get the attention they need. So, you know, 30 is a, is a good-sized class, uh, but we also have retirements coming up, so it's good that we have the August class coming, because there'll be more vacancies by the time that occurs. So, um, you know, it, it feels as though we're on kind of a treadmill. We're constantly playing catch-up on, on the workforce within the police department. Uh, and so that, that's a constant battle, and we do offer, you know, more than what we have vacancies for at that time.
Great, wonderful. Thank you, sir.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. Quick question, kind of, are we doing this two for the first time? Is this the first time we've done two academy classes in one year?
You know, I, I can't say that, you know, that it's always been that way. But i- if, if there's been a prior year where we had two, it's been quite some time ago. I mean, it's, you know, in, in recent history, we've only had one. The, the state actually determines, you know, when we can have a class and how many we can have. And so, it's something, not only Chief McMurray, but, but his predecessor had been working hard with the state to get the approval for the second class. And, and Chief McMurray continued to press forward on that and was able to get it for this year.
Is that because we're down overall in numbers for our police force size comparative to our, our population?
Um, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for exactly how the state made that decision. So I'm not certain that exactly, you know, why they did. And I think, I think maybe our, our arguments and our advocacy for it were, were compelling. I mean, when you only have one per year and you're the, the size that we are, it's very easy to kind of quickly go underwater in terms of number of personnel that you have during the year when you're waiting an entire 12-month period. So, it's much easier to do, you know, help the workforce development within that department if you can have, you know, multiple academies.
Thank you.
Any other questions? That was great information. Thank you for holding it, Mr. Kling. All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15L, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Pitney Bowes, Inc. for the rental of a Senpro P3000 mailing system. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I have questions.
Mr. Russell?
Who, Mayor Battle, who should I address these questions to?
Mr. Benyon will be...
Mr. Benyon, why are we buying this machine?
This is a normal machine that we use for our postage through Pitney Bowes. It's a renewal of a lease that we've had.
So it's the same exact machine that we had this past year? I had, I've always been kind of wondering how we do the mail. Who, who's in charge of the postage budget?
Well, the budget actually comes through my department, but all departments have access. Anytime they ship something, it's charged to that particular account number.
Okay. Do you have a listing of which departments use the mails or use the postage?
All departments use the postage, but we don't measure, we would have to, if we were running letters through the machine, each time we change department, if we had three letters for one department and then we had 100 for another, we'd have to reprogram it to charge to each department. It's not really, in our opinion, worth the cost of reprogramming it. But the, the, some of the costs that we can track would be like UPS shipping and so forth. All of that is also charged through that same account number.
So hypothetically, if a, a councilman, say me, provided you with 38,000 letters, letters tomorrow to send to each of my constituents, would they be mailed out?
Yes, they would.
Okay. So really, nobody's in control of the budget?
That's true.
Okay. Yeah, I think we need to work on that.
Well, we'll look at, on some of the issues, we'll look at as far as the outside mailing sources that we use. We can change that pretty much when the new budget starts. If we want to go to the extent where we stop each time and mail something and change the, reprogram the machine to charge that department, that's, that's possible. But it, it will require just, it would slow the process down.
Yeah, and I, I'm not necessarily advocating that. I don't have the solution. I was just always curious as if we were managing it. And I know that it seems like in today's day and age, our budget, we would be hitting our budget. We would be sending out things less because of PDF files and all the great computer systems we have. But, you know, our budget was actually over last year. Actual is greater than what we budgeted for? And that kind of concerns me.
Part of the reason the budget is over is because typically, when we have an election year, we up the budget. We failed to do that in 2016 because of election. We also had some special mailouts that were requested by council that also contributed to that overage.
Okay. So maybe our fault is what you're saying?
I'm saying it's partially our fault because we didn't, we didn't put enough in the budget and then the, the additional mailing is also a cost.
Okay. Just keep in mind, I'm interested in this, so...
You were saying it was...
Yeah, he was saying. I know what he said. I just used more direct words. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one between the City of Huntsville and Bolton Construction for Bob Wallace Forest Main Relocation Directional Drilling Project Number 71-16-SM02.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Chair, second, or by Mr. Russell, second by the Chair. Mr. Cook?
Counsel, this is simply a time extension. This line routes between the Arsenal and the Botanical Gardens. And due to coordination with the Arsenal and seasonal events with Botanical Gardens and trying to stay out of their way during that construction, we're asking for a time extension on this, but there, there's no funds involved with it.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Cook? All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen N is a resolution authorizing the agreement with the town of Owens Crossroads. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Mr. Cook, could you please explain this agreement to us?
Yes, this is simply an agreement with Owens Crossroads, you know, for us to treat mass quantities of sewer at, at the plant. The plant in Hampton Cove averages about a million gallons a day. Currently, we have a six-million-gallon permit and we can do this quite easily. It would, has the possibility of being a pretty good generator of funds for water pollution control. And we do it for multiple different communities surrounding Huntsville.
So we, this is not something unique to an agreement with Owens Crossroads. We've done this with other communities as well?
Yes, ma'am. Tryon, Madison, Livestone County.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cook? Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Low Bidder Reed Contracting Services, Inc. for periodic bid for sewer, sanitary sewer projects, 2017. Project Number 71-17-SP14.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Cook?
Counsel, this is the periodic contract that we use when we can't get to things with our forces. We do multiple construction projects, just like the Bob Wallace Forest Main for the most part, in-house, but there are times when we can't get to it. And this is a laundry list of periodic items for sanitary sewer that we can basically put in, in any kind of sewer that, that comes up that we can't either handle, meaning it's 40-foot deep, or that we just can't physically get to because our five crews are busy in other locations at that point in time.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Cook? All in favor of approving Fifteen O, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen U is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement between Reed Contracting Services, Inc. for Mid-City for Open Space Demolition Grading Project Number 17-17-SP13. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Ms. Martin?
Yes, ma'am. This is a modification to come back and request the award of option number two to the low bidder Reed Contracting for the Mid-City demolition. This is at a reduced cost, bid price of $500,000. They were able to get out there and get started when we awarded the base bid on January 22nd. And to date, they have made tremendous progress. And so, they've come back to us and offered a $250,000 reduction in order to award this bid. We have evaluated it and we believe it is a good price.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Martin? Discussion? All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen X is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Recovery Services of DeKalb County, Inc. for the lease of property located at 820 North Memorial Parkway. Is there a motion to approve?
I move.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by the Chair. Mr. Easter?
Yes, this is a renewal of an existing lease with Recovery Services. They've been in that facility for three years. They're asking for another three years. They will be paying the city 29.50 a month.
Any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I asked to hold this item. And counsel, as you know, this particular item is something that is currently being looked into by the Ethics Commission. Of course, I have no nexus at all, no financial ties to Recovery Services. So my question, counselor, is, is this an item that I should vote on or can vote on? Or...
Mr. Riley?
I would recommend that, that, that it would be better to be safe rather than sorry. While you may not have a nexus now, you have, of course, had a connection with this firm for some period of time. And I think in regard to prior transactions in the council earlier, I think when this was, I believe you did mention possibly recusing yourself from anything involving this. So I think it would be the safest course to do that.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President. And with that being said, I'm going to follow the advice of my counsel and abstain from voting on this particular item.
All right.
And thank you so kindly.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? And let the record show that Mr. Culver has recused himself.
Thank you.
Item number, y'all keep me straight now. Fifteen double C, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept fiscal year 2016 State of Alabama Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG funds, and assume the responsibility for the total amount of local matching funds. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Would you like to explain this item to us?
Yes, Madam President. In 2016, the Community Development Department applied for an emergency solutions grant through ADECA. And this grant, the funding from this grant will be used to assist local homeless facilities and shelters, transitional housing agencies and domestic abuse shelters. The amount of the grant is $200,000 and the match is in salaries of staff.
And this item, the, the succeeding items, item double D through double K are all allocations of that grant? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Does anybody have questions for Ms. Jordan?
No.
Discussion? All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item fifteen F, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama and Family Services Center, Inc. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling.
Madam Chairman, I have questions. Ms. Jordan, I was asked by a citizen, how do you know this is the appropriate agency to provide this money to and how do you check on them during the year?
Sure. We do a request for proposals once we are notified that we'll have funding availability. We select agencies that meet the needs of the community based on our consolidated plan and other documentation gathered by agencies throughout the city. We do monitor these subrecipients on a regular basis.
And how do you do that?
All of their requests for reimbursements are scrutinized by staff and there's a person on staff that's dedicated to reviewing their outcomes. They do submit their outcomes with every payment request. And so, we re, we reimburse for expenses that the agencies undertake.
Thank you.
And how are those outcomes determined?
Well, for instance, Family Services Center, they will be providing transitional housing opportunities for 15 to 20 families. And so, we track those families and those living conditions.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen double I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama and Salvation Army, Inc. The Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Ms. Jordan?
Yes, Madam President. The Salvation Army has an emergency shelter program. They will be housing 100 to 200 persons with lease funds from the city. And so, we ask for your approval tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Jordan?
Where's the location?
They're...
Is that the one off of...
On Seminole?
They're on, on Seminole.
Seminole.
That's a Seminole location that, that's associated with this grant.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen double M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a First Amendment to Project Development Agreement, buy-in between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, Madison County, Alabama, the Industrial Development Board of the City of Huntsville, Remington Outdoor Company, Inc. and Remington Arms, Alabama LLC.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Davis?
Madam...
Or Mr. Mayor Battle?
Madam President, I may just address this one. We have, Remington has requested that we put them on a calendar year. Some of the checks that we do against them have been year-to-year and, and doing it in March, at the end of March has, has made it very difficult to make sure that everything matches up, W2s and, and, and other tax forms that are filed. We have an accountant come through every year just to make sure that we, that we are meeting the agreement that, as it was put forth. And thus far, we've been ahead of agreement in both hiring and in actual amount of money, dollars paid to, to each individual worker. Then we're asking to move this from a March 31st to a December 31st date. Makes it very easy to close out books and makes it very easy to check, to make sure that they are meeting the obligations. We will have a stopgap check in this March since we, since it's halfway through, or quarter way through the year. We'll have a stopgap check there and then finish up in December 31st. But this agreement lets us go to that December 31st date.
Are there any questions? All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen double O is a resolution authorizing and approving the settlement agreement and mutual release among the Public Building Authority of the City of Huntsville, Dawson Building Contractors, Inc., Frank J. Raleigh and Raleigh and Associates, Inc. in civil actions numbers 2006-1887-DSP and 2006-1943-KKH. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell.
And I'm, I'm gonna let Mr. Riley address this in a minute, but this is the last of a long line of litigation that has been in place with the building of the jail. Nine years ago, when I came into office, we had a halfway-built jail. We had to finish the building of the jail. After that, during that, we already had litigation where both the builder was suing us, we were suing the builder. It was one of those cases where the only ones that were gonna make money out of it were the lawyers. And it's just the honest truth with it. So we have finally come down and, and our team, who has been Mr. Fees and Mr. Riley and Mr. Joffreyon have worked through item after item, sub after sub. This is the last sub, the last agreement that has to be agreed to. We, we didn't get any cheese, but we got out of the trap, is how I put it. And it's, it's not funny, but that's the way it is. We, we got out with, without damage, without having to pay the builder anything. And we actually retained a small amount of money from the subs in this case. So, this has been a, gosh, it's been, been a 15-year saga and, and not a pretty picture. But everybody here who is on council has worked through it. Everybody here in administration has worked through it. And Mr. Easter and his staff have done just yeoman's work. And every week that they had to come up and ask for more money to finish that jail was not a, was not a fun time to come up here at council and, and having to face it. But they did it and did it right. having to face it, but they did it and did it right, and they have got us now a functional city-county jail that services about, right about eight hundred to nine hundred inmates, and has made for twelve hundred inmates, and it's one of those things that nobody wanted to face, but when you were elected, you were elected to come through and finish it up, and each one of you have been through the angst of it. We have in our office been through the, the angst of it. Our administration and the people who have gone to marvelous lengths to make sure that this was done and done right and done as, in as efficient a manner as possible have gone through and done just a wonderful job of finishing something that, you know, we all kind of walked into. And so to each of you, I want to say, this is the end of the saga. This is the final vote that you will have to take, as far as I know. Is that right, Mr. Riley?
That's correct.
So this is the final vote, this is the final negotiations, and, and I want to appreciate both buildings, Building Services and Jeff Easter and his crew for all the work they've done, and the legal team, because they have done some really amazing things to make sure that we've come out and gotten this thing down to the finish line.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Mr. Riley, is there anything you'd like to add?
I believe the mayor has covered the bases very well on this. I would certainly like to, in addition to, to complimenting my predecessor, who spent many a year concerned and worried over this, and in my discussions with him, as I got ready to assume this office, I know that is something that weighed heavily on him throughout his term. I know he enjoys and joins us in the celebration that this long and arduous chapter is over. I also want to give a special shout out to my assistant, my chief assistant, Sissy Cates, and her service and her advice and her work on this case throughout, long before I arrived, is, is legendary, and all who participated know that. I liken myself being here for this happy occasion and, and for the celebration as sort of being like the, the guy that was born on third base and thought I hit a triple. A lot of work that was done before I arrived, and so I'm the benefactor of that, being here to be able to enjoy this special moment. But I do strongly recommend that the council approve this settlement. It is the end of a long saga. If you look at the numbers there, this lawsuit was filed back in two thousand and six, so it is well over a decade in duration, and it is long time that it be resolved. I congratulate all who have worked on it, and I congratulate the support, and I just urge the council to adopt and to confirm this settlement.
And, and I might step in and say, the reason that there is any room for congratulations was there was a period when it very much looked like the city of Huntsville would have to pay, was gonna have to pay. After paying the exorbitant amount that we had to pay to get that jail built, it looked like we were going to have to pay more in legal costs, and the, the congratulations comes to the team who figured out how, how to make sure that we did not have to pay, and in fact, we could come down to a settlement that was, was better for the citizens of Huntsville and for the city of Huntsville.
Bearing in mind that this is a legal matter, and there are certainly limitations on discussions, are there any questions or comments the council members would like to Thank you, all, everyone who was involved in making this happen. All in favor of approving Fifteen double O, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Blends us to fifteen, item sixteen, legal department items and transactions, sixteen A one, sixteen A vacations of easement. Sixteen A one is an ordinance vacating a portion of the utility and drainage easement lot one A, Monterey subdivision, twelve oh one, Bluefield Circle, southeast.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Is there any discussion? All in favor, indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen, sixteen A two is the item that was added earlier to the agenda. It is an ordinance vacating gas, sewer, and water line easements for mid-city subdivision phase one, Mid City Owners, LLC. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Is there any discussion? Mr. Davis?
Yeah, we'd like an explanation since it was added to the agenda.
Council members, this would be the vacation of all former easements that ran in and along Madison Square Mall. If you've been by there recently, there's no power on the building, no utility serving the building as the demolition is occurring. So one of the things that we must do to move forward with a mid-city redevelopment project is to remove all of those easements. The urgency for tonight was that there's a pending closing, so Top Goff can move forward with their construction to open by the end of the year on Monday, which would be before we have another council meeting. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, I apologize, I think our outside legal council and both Huntsville Utilities and Engineering thought that this was on the last council meeting, and it was late this afternoon that I was notified, about three o'clock, that those had not been brought before council, so I really appreciate your willingness to take this upon consideration.
Any questions for Mr. Davis? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no vacation of rights of way, no deeds for acceptance, no routine bond satisfactions, and no liquor bond mortgages. That brings us to item number seventeen, non-roster communications from the public. With those who wish to speak, please approach, approach the podium, share with us your name and your address, please. You will have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Frances Akeridge, two thousand and two Rogers Drive, District Two. I'm here to address a topic that Councilman Keith brought up and is related to the police academy planning. I'm delighted to hear about that. With summertime coming into play, we're gonna have more activity with creeps and crooks. So I am proposing that we think ahead, out of the box, and start thinking about use of bicycle patrols in areas that are not just the downtown on weekends, but expanding that to entertainment districts on the weekend, but in particular, in Five Points, north of Pratt and south of Oakwood, from Meridian to, pretty much to Maysville. You know, typically in business, you have to identify a problem and then offer a solution. I don't have statistics. I just have some common sense, and I'm out and about in my area, and I know that we have troubles there. Preventing crime is something that we really need to address. The neighbors that I'm working with, day in, day out over there, are definitely calling the police department. The numbers are good for how often they call. What we don't have are solutions to get kids and young people thinking more about using the police as a partner. So I'm proposing that we use bicycles. I have ten items that I could read aloud, but I think I'll just send that on to Councilman Russell, that have been determined by police themselves as the advantages of using bicycles in those type of areas, even though it's somewhat suburban right now, they have urban nature. Secondly, I am delighted, Councilman Kling, that you brought to light the members of the Prince Hall Masons. Seeing all those faces reminds me how desperately we need mentors for fifth-grade boys at MLK, Montview, and Chapman Schools. They, all three principals have asked for that. I went to the Boys and, not Boys and Girls Club, I'm sorry, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, begged them on behalf of those three principals to start recruiting. To my knowledge, there are no placements made yet. I do know it's very complicated. You have to not only find a volunteer, but match them with the right person. So I did suggest that the Masons address the need for mentors as fifth-grade boys, this was, and they prefer men of color, to get into the schools and help those kids once a week, half hour a day, deal with the challenges that they have. Councilman Keith, your story about the older elderly man, elderly woman with a bullet in her living room, that's the kind of things that those kids can help prevent. I'll talk to you later about how.
Thank you very much for your comments, for some great suggestions there that I think we're taking notes on. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Yes, sir. Please give us your name and address. Welcome.
Kevin Wile, I live at one thirteen Fourth Street, right across from Campus Eight-O-Five. Appreciate you guys passing. The entertainment district, I think it's done a lot of good. I live right there, I can look at it. There's a lot of activity. Police do a good job over there. We've got a good precinct. It feels like a neighborhood. They're very active. I wanted to see if anybody had any ideas on, on jobs and industry in my district. Fourth District has always been a working-class neighborhood. Now, people that have lived there, I've lived there off and on for years. We're having a, it's changing rapidly, and, and it's good change, and we needed it, and we still need it. I need a couple streetlights on Fourth Street behind Big Spring Cafe, if you guys have any power over that. That'd be great. It's about a city block, and it's pretty dark, and my dog works real hard out there. But, you know, we have Russell Stove Factory, we have Low Mill, which is a world-class arts entertainment district, but what we don't have is a Remington in the neighborhood, you know, a manufacturing facility within a neighborhood where we can walk to work, maybe employ the people in the neighborhood, and there's gonna be a lot of people displaced when, when the projects are moved, and I don't know what the solution is there, how you guys go about that, where we put people. But a lot of these people live in that neighborhood, and they've been invested in that neighborhood, and it'd be nice to have schools that maybe aren't breweries. You know, breweries are great, I love them, but, you know, and maybe some of the facilities that used to be manufacturing in a working-class neighborhood, that would be, that'd be great, 'cause, you know, I know that the mayor's big on bike lanes and things like that, and I think that's how you build a community, is you put industry in a neighborhood, you allow people to walk to it, and you allow people to take pride in a product they make, and that's how that neighborhood has always been, I guess, or it was, until they, you know, stopped producing things there, and we found creative uses for schools and manufacturing facilities, but it'd be nice if we could put some stuff there instead of Research Park, maybe stop investing in things like the mall, put it into the, you know, the center of the city, bring back the heart of Huntsville. Heart of Huntsville's still a vacant lot, you know, and it's been a couple of years. I know you guys are working on that. That's really my concern, and, you know, that's all I'm asking, is, you know, maybe just think a little more creatively when we get big firms here, big companies, put them in the community, and I know that, you know, you know, there's zones and whatnot, but, you know, West Side's, you know, still pretty, you know, I mean, we've got a transmission shop next to a church, next to a burrito joint, so, you know.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sure Councilman Kling would be happy to meet with you afterwards. Ms. Reed?
I'll make it short. I want to thank you all, the mayor, for putting on the extra police officers that I see tonight on the agenda that we surely have been needing them. Speeders and wrecks and everything's going on in this city, and over on Jordan Lane, they have robbers all up and down that street. I think Donald General was robbed twice in one week, and it's just going on all over the city, and, and I want to say that, thank goodness, the school board finally have decided on Dr. Aiken. I think he's gonna be good for the school system. I know that was a hard-pressed, trying to figure that one out. I also would like to say, I wish, and I have thought a lot, my grandson goes to Huntsville High, that you all had of got more involved in that parking over there, instead of trying to help sell these schools, and y'all find people that buy them, would try to help settle that parking before it got so bad over there. I, I know they're fussing every day, I hear that, what's going on over there, and I've been hearing that for three years. He's a junior, and it's, it's a fussing and fighting, and the Masonic Lodge has sold, and the school wasn't interested in that, I guess, so I think it's almost a little bit late to do the right thing now, unless you all do get connected, and maybe this new superintendent can help you figure out something, but I know selling the schools was very important, but nobody had done a long-range planning, and that's what we really need in the city, a little bit more of expert, of the people we already have in this city. I didn't like that word expert that y'all put on here you was gonna hire to do the long-range planning. I don't like those words. Experts from out of town? We got plenty of them right here in this city. Maybe y'all don't know some, maybe we can give you some. Thank you, have a good weekend, I'll leave you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Move to adjourn.
Well, is that gentleman here who earlier wanted to say something? He's already left. All right, any, anyone else? We have a motion to adjourn?
No.
We are adjourned, thank you. Thank you all for your patience.